Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six o'clock P M. Edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Robert Tatro. I am the chair and I am in the call of meeting to order. So allow me to read through my script first before we begin. Oh, actually, before I begin, if you have any cell phones, electronic devices, anything that makes noise, if you go ahead and put that on a silent or, you know, just get rid of the ring for us, that would appreciate it. Um, so we have to confirm member access first, and this is an open meeting of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. It's being operated as a hybrid format under chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two. The public can join the meeting remotely by calling one six four six seven four nine three one one two and entering the access code nine four four five seven one three four nine. Or you can go on the computer online and go to gotomeeting dot com. In the upper right corner, there'll be an option to join, and you can put in number nine four four five seven one three four nine. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this party are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along, use of the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, this is Robert Tatro. Again, I am the chair of the zoning board of appeals. Permit me to confirm that all members of the board are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Vice Chair Mike Maron.
Affirmative.
Mister Cussy.
Affirmative.
Mister Chacolo.
Affirmative.
Miss Bush.
Affirmative.
And Miss Bush is calling in remotely this evening, just for the record. And Miss Roach.
I'm here.
Welcome back, Miss Roach. It's very nice to see you. Town officials or employees participating, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Caleb Moody.
Here.
Keith Hesleton.
Here.
Thank you. Please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Um, please note that it's being recorded by the Auburn cable television or ACT TV, and it will be rebroadcast. If there are applicants participating remotely, ask them to state their name and address if they are attending in person. Do we have anybody on the agenda or calling in this evening that is a butter to one of the hearings who would like to speak? I see Mister Johnson here. He is the applicant. Okay, thank you. Um, so I do not see anyone else, so we're going to continue to move forward. Um, okay, so that's pretty much it, what I have. Um, we have a public hearing at six o'clock P M. Applicant Adam Chumsey, Chumsey, excuse me, requesting a special permit under section nine point three point twelve of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment located at fifty-eight Adella Street, map four parcel twenty. This hearing remains open and is a continuation from seven twenty-one and eight eighteen twenty-two. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, Miss Roach, um, are you aware of all the, uh, up to date on all the issues surrounding this, um, multiple hearing, um, application?
I am, and I watched the last meeting that I was not at today.
Okay.
So I've seen all the footage from the meeting. I can fill that paperwork out with Caleb. I believe they need the paperwork filled out, and I in fact saw the meeting, so I'm good.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, and I just want to make sure, Miss Bush, uh, I know you're an alternate, but before we get going here, um, you are completely up to date on this hearing as well, I believe, right?
Um, I wasn't at the last hearing, and I haven't had a chance to watch the, um, the, that hearing, so I'm not up to date on the, the last hearing.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your disclosure on that. Okay, so, um, we all know where we are stat, you know, statistically, so we're going to continue on. So I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor to the applicant, and, um, we'll listen to their updated proposal.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lundgren. I'm representing the Chumsies. I'm a builder in town, and I'm going to look to do this project for them. So I just wanted to speak a little bit about what we've done and revised the plan, which I believe you all have, correct?
Yes.
So, as you know, this originally was a hardship for Mister Chumsey, and the Chumsey family sold their house, um, with the applicant's sister. Um, since then, Mister Chumsey passed away after they sold the house. So now it's a hardship for the Chumsey family because they have no place to live. That's why we're looking to use this available space to make it into a living area, which is allowable. Um, but if you've seen the plan, we dropped it down. Um, we redesigned it again with the architect, with, um, John Reel, and we're down to seven hundred and seventy-four square feet. It's a very limited space. Um, we're asking the board to accept the plan as it is. You know, it's just slightly over, but it's allowable. But I know in the past, in the historical, um, data on some of these meetings, it had minor, um, changes like that, allowed some, some extra square footage on it, and we're asking to do the same on this one. Um, when we look at the structure, it's already existed and permitted. There's nothing at all changing on the outside of the, um, building itself, that it's already built and standing, and is very limo, if no impact on the neighborhood. Um, all the setbacks are correct. It's all, um, zoned properly for that. It's just a small, um, square footage. It doesn't make it compliant, otherwise we wouldn't be here. So we're just asking for Z B A to make, um, to grant permission to build it the way it is, as way submitted on this plan.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor to the vice chair, Mister Maron.
Mister Chairman, I have no additional questions. I, my, my concerns, my questions have been vetted thoroughly.
Okay. Mister Cussy.
I have no questions either.
Mister Chacolo.
No questions.
Miss Roach.
Um, I don't think I have any, maybe some discussion with the board, but I don't think I have any questions for the applicant.
Okay, I agree. I don't have anything else further. Um, I appreciate you, uh, making the efforts to, uh, satisfy the requirements of the board, and I know this is the, uh, third set of plans on this project, so it is greatly appreciated. Um, I have nothing else, so if there is a motion to, uh, close the public portion of the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mister Maron.
I approve.
Mister Cussy.
Prove.
Mister Chacolo.
Prove.
Miss Roach.
Prove.
And I vote to approve. Okay, uh, around the horn one more time, vice chair.
So in my view, um, and I've been on the record consistently, this is not a redesign of what we were originally proposed. Um, this is the same footprint. It's the same large apartment. Um, what they've done is relabeled storage for what used to be another room. Um, and so I don't see this as a substantial decrease, um, to what they're asking for relief, well over a thousand square feet for this. We may not like our bylaw. We may think that it's archaic based on seven hundred square feet, but it's what we have today. This board has the authority, um, to, to grant, uh, relief from our bylaws. Uh, but this is excessive, in my view.
Seventy-five square feet?
It's not seventy-five square feet, in my view, Mister Chairman, um, because they've relabeled a room storage. Doesn't satisfy me that that's not going to be a, a usable space. That's an oversized closet, in my view. And so, um, I don't think that this is a decrease from the original plan.
Okay.
May I allow to speak at this?
No, so we have the public portion of the hearing closed. So this is just discussion between the board members. Um, I, it's not anything that we really kind of have the other steps take place. Uh, Mister Cussy, to you, sir?
Yeah, my feeling is, uh, so if we have a basement that's a thousand square feet, if somebody wants to put a accessory apartment in there, um, and they come in with the seven hundred square feet, they still have the three hundred square feet, um, for storage or, or whatever they're going to use it for. That was my issue with the, uh, oversized and then having a closet. I mean, we, you know, people put these in their basements and, um, you know, you're going to have a thousand, sometimes twelve hundred square feet. They're going to put seven hundred. There's still that extra space that's available there, so, um, I don't have as much of an issue with the, uh, extra space in closet or reserved. I don't know that we can actually look at that. We're looking at exactly what, um, they're proposing to, to living space. That's how I feel.
Thank you. Mister Chacolo.
I have no further questions, but I would like to add that I echo Mister Maron's comments.
Okay, thank you. Miss Roach.
So I guess, can Caleb participate in this discussion, or in your opinion?
Sure, just for the board members, but you can ask questions if you need to confirm.
So, I guess I, Mister Cussy, I think brings up a good point, that if I have a thousand square feet in my basement, and I come and say I'm going to do a seven hundred square foot apartment, obviously, I can't get rid of the three hundred square feet. In this situation, if the original plan did not include that as a second bedroom, I think we'd be in a different situation. For me, it would. Um, I wish that there is some, was something that we could do to ensure that that does not someday become living space, because I don't disagree with Mister Maron, that I think that could be an issue, but I do think that's a little outside of our scope. Um, if I was to go with this, I would be, my, my conditions would be as tight as I could get to anything I can do to make sure that space doesn't become space, I would do. I don't know how far we can go with that. Um, permits are going to be issued, obviously, building permits. I would want it, no heat, no blueboard, no sheet, nothing. Space, storage, nothing else. No flooring, no nothing. I don't know how far we can reach. Um, but I agree. It's, it's borderline, because it was like, okay, that's not a space. There you go. I don't think we can ignore that fact. But I also don't think, what are they going to do? We're going to make them take the thing down and put up a new roof in that one section? I, I think we're in a tough spot.
If I may, Mister Chairman.
Sure.
So, thank, um, and, and I, I, I do, I agree with your comments. You know, Mister Cussy, if, if I may, for the chair.
Absolutely.
Um, I thought a lot about what you had said during the last meeting about, about the equivalent of being a basement, and it has a great deal of merit, and I agree. Um, but I think where I, where I land is it's, it's not a basement. It was pre-constructed. Um, and, and there was a certain narrative, um, that we were told on how it was reconstructed. Um, with that aside, this was a space that was pre-plumbed in preparation for this. Um, and so, you know, with the evidence before us, I think that, and, and I appreciate the thoughtful discussion on intent, and so we won't go there tonight. Uh, but, um, but, but I, I, I was, during the last hearing, I wanted to make sure the applicant knew that we were a super majority only last time, so that the full board, um, so that he would understand that I was only one opinion, um, and that, um, he would have an opportunity to vet this for all board members, um, for the betterment of, of what he's trying to accomplish. Um, and I think in a perfect world, we would be able to modify our bylaws a little quicker, uh, because I think we would all agree that even seven hundred square feet is an archaic size for an apartment. Um, but this isn't a basement. And when the original applicant came before us, my concerns that were expressed explicitly spoke to that, that I was hopeful that there would be a redesign, um, that would be palatable, so that they could be successful. But relocating, uh, excuse me, relabeling a space, um, that will have no sight, line sight of in the future. I'm not trying to penalize them. They have a structure. But they, quite frankly, I mean, this is, this is a classic scenario of asking for, for forgiveness instead of permission and putting us against the wall. Um, I think that if I come down on this and vote my conscience, this is just a relabeling of a room. Thank you, Miss Jim.
Okay, so.
To the chair, can I ask you a question? Is there any scenario with conditions that would change your opinion?
No, not for this space, because it's, because as I said, I wouldn't wreck, I wouldn't want, that's a beautiful structure. Um, it's, it's, it just, I viewed it twice. I mean, it's, it's well constructed. Um, I think that they're in a spot where, um, where the footprint is what it is. I wouldn't expect them to start tearing down roof and, and putting gables up, um, to reduce the size. Um, what I would recommend, again, I'm one voice, and just a volunteer, that I'll recommend everyone to listen to. Uh, but this is, this is a space that was predetermined for this based on, on how the, the, uh, the initial setup was made. Um, and to satisfy this board, they relabeled the room. And so I, I, I wouldn't, just, again, I would vote my conscience and, um, and say that this is not a substantive change for what they originally proposed.
So, I absolutely, truly appreciate everyone's input, because it's all accurate, hundred percent. I see everyone's point of view, um, and I also appreciate the fact that everybody is, is just, you know, being honest and completely truthful about it. My opinion on this whole thing, quite honestly, is just because he has the setbacks, he has the space. We have granted, I don't know which is individual case by case, but we have granted similar projects access with smaller lots and smaller amount of setbacks. Um, I personally don't think we should have restricted his space in the first one, because it doesn't affect any setbacks, nobody's going to see it. The building is already there. My main concern is, let's just hypothetically say they decide to piecemeal this over the next three to five years, and they finish it, and it's not to code. I'm more concerned with the people that are going to be living in there down the road to make sure it's safe, and I'm also going to be concerned with the fact that we have public safety people that may have to enter that building to save someone, whether it be police, fire, or whatever. What we're doing here is making sure that they're up to code, that it's safe, and it's, it's safe to get in and out of, and it's safe to live in.
No.
That's how I see it.
Fair, but with respect, Mister Chairman, that's inspectional services for all.
Correct, it is. But again, what I'm saying is, if we don't grant the permit, the project doesn't move forward. The project then could possibly move forward over the next three to five years unsupervised and uninspected.
Agreed. But is, but, right.
So, oh, go ahead, I'm interested in hearing.
I, I know. I just, because I have so much respect for you, but, but, but honestly, I mean, we're not going to be able to police this if this, if this isn't approved, and they move forward with it, we're not going to police it. We're not going to know that. We know that hap, we know that happens.
That's my point.
But for fear of that, I mean, just for me, for fear of that, I can't approve a project just for fear of what they might do behind our back later.
But I can't deny a project for fear of what they might do behind our back.
Fair enough.
Whether it be built to code or not to code, or whether it be safety or not safety, you know, it's, again, it's just the opposing. I look at it, you see it as because they don't have the option, the government, and you, I respect your opinion. I see it as, we don't, the, the rules aren't fitting, the rubber isn't meeting the road, and the rule needs to be changed. It's not the fault of the applicant or the fault of the board. And that's in my humble opinion.
No, I, I don't disagree. I mean, I, I think thought.
This was a great bylaw when we were a town of ranches. But now that we have these thirty-five hundred, forty-five hundred square foot houses that we really didn't have when these bylaws were really given a lot of consideration, I'm sure, or they were few and far between, that people didn't drive by and see every day, right? And that's really what it is. We have, and we are working on changing this bylaw. Um, but to me, I, I see it as, he's only seventy-five square feet. He's jumped through all the hoops we've asked him to jump through, and I would rather see the project move forward with a, with a building permit, and then it's safe. I mean, and again, you, you say, well, we can't trust them to not finish it in the future, and I say, well, that's, he could finish it without us even knowing about it, and it could be an unsafe condition.
So for the record, Mister Chairman, and again, thoughtful points. What I always appreciate is that you're looking at, you know, what's the practical application?
I just try to.
What's going to happen? And, and it makes sense, but, but for the record, this is not a, just a, a seventy-five, a seventy-five square feet over the bylaw. And this is not a substantive change. They've, they've changed the label on, on a room. And, and so, you know, what, what I think, um, what I think I was challenged by is, is understanding the genesis of how this project started, and the fact that there was rough, rough plumbing set in in preparation for this, before this was planned as an apartment. This was planned as storage, and that's what we were doing. So those changes, notwithstanding respectfully the hardship that the family has, has gone through, um, this was pre-planned. And we're put in a position where, what are we going to do?
Right.
And, and I, and I in good conscience will vote my conscience to suggest, I mean, you know, I, I, I don't prescribe to, well, you deal with it, and what are you going to do?
No, I understand that. And I also appreciate that, the concern about the rough plumbing, but again, if you had poured, uh, I'm just hypothetical, I don't even know the square footage, but if you pour a thirty by thirty pad for a garage, you're going to put a drain stub in there. Everyone, I don't think, no construction person that was doing it would even recommend you do it without it. That's just the way it is, because you're not going to cut up and jackhammer up a floor to put a drain in later, you know, and affect the foundation and affect the, you know, the floor of, of the building.
Right, but based on earlier testimony, Mister Chairman, respectfully, it was more than a drain.
It's just a drain, I thought, right? It's just a drain, I believe, on the plans, right? It's a stubbed-in drain. Caleb, can we confirm that? It's just a stubbed-in drain, right?
So it's just rough, it's just a rough plumbing. It's a plumbing connection to, to the sewer system. Um, most people that build a garage are going to, going to, if they want to sink or something to wash their hands in their garage, they're going to, they're going to put a sewer pipe in.
Okay, good, I'm glad you, good.
No, that's what I'm saying, yeah, so it's just the stuff, that's all, everybody's going to do that.
Yeah, because it was my interpretation. Okay, good.
Not necessarily, I just.
No, but happy to be corrected.
I want to be just.
No, 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 if I'm landing on, yeah, if I'm landing on.
To be honest, I, I honestly think the square foot is somewhat arbitrary and capricious, to be honest with you. I don't think, just the basic standpoint of who we are, and, you know, he, he has life liberty in the pursuit of happiness. He has the square footage. He has the space. He has the financial means. It's meeting all the setbacks. Honestly, that sounds like America to me. I'm just not being, I'm, I'm not trying to pull on anybody's Patriots hotstrings here, but realistically, that's what we're supposed to be doing, right? We're trying to make sure it's safe.
Mister Chairman, if I might.
Yeah, you may.
Um, respectfully disagree with what you've just said.
Okay.
Uh, because I have an acre of land in my backyard with a breezeway, and I attach a garage with an apartment above it, and I say, I'm going to make it my full acre. That's, that's not what the bylaw or the intent of our bylaw is.
Correct.
Because I've, and I meet all setbacks, okay? That's just an open invitation to, to putting up something that's just wrong according to the bylaw. And I do, um, somewhat agree with you.
Hmm.
However, the bylaw that we currently have is what we have to work with.
You're right. And also part of that definition, it does clearly state, though, that, again, we've discussed, that the addition has to be inferior, so to speak, I tend with the exact language, but it has to be smaller than the original structure.
That is.
So that is part of that as well.
Yes.
So we have that safeguard that nobody's going to put a full acre Noah's Ark building in their yard, you know what I mean?
That is true, but you understand, you understand why I chose.
I do.
The dimension I did.
Hundred percent.
You know, but the difference between the ridiculous and sublime.
No, I totally get it, and that's why I'm pointing out that we have a wording in the bylaw that specifically states that the addition will be smaller than the original housing.
Correct.
So that's why the seven hundred and seventy-five square feet in this doesn't apply to this.
You keep referring to that seven hundred and seventy-five square feet, but I am on the track that says, this is not seven hundred and seventy-five square feet.
All right, so if it's eleven hundred, I'll, I'll still agree that he could have the original eleven hundred. We gave it to the person across the town, and I know it's different, but we did it over at the house on.
Which is now approaching.
What was the line?
A hundred and fifty percent of what our bylaw states. So we're stating, um, we, we have stated seven hundred and seventy-five square feet because of a new labeling, as Mister Maron said. That's all. I just wanted to.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Believe me, I want everybody to have the opportunity to have their concerns brought up and addressed. That's what we're here for.
So these, this whole plan has been changed. You didn't just cut off bed.
Well, you can't, we can't really talk to them unless we open it back up to them.
But we, these buildings, uh, rooms have been downsized, right? No.
Can I answer it, or?
No, we can't have the answer right now. It's brought it down. He had originally eleven hundred square foot apartment, it's down to seven seventy-five.
And put storage.
But so if it, if it was done by an architect and it had proper printing on it, and they paid five hundred dollars for it, would be any more valid?
And, and Miss Jim, and, and to your point, I mean, even if, even if things were shifted around, we're still talking about the same footprint. The footprint's not going to change.
Nope.
And the, and the interior use of this is not going to change.
Nope, I agree.
So I think what before us is simple is that, is are we okay with a north of a thousand square foot apartment, um, on a structure, simply because they find themselves in a position that it's already built?
Already built, again, they, again, this is a point where they had the authority and the ability to build that structure, the town.
I'm not, I'm not challenging.
Without any association or involvement from the zoning board of appeals.
I'm not challenging that, but they weren't, the intent was not to build it for an apartment. What's before us is an apartment of north of a thousand square feet, because the structure is already built.
Hmm.
That's what's.
I don't disagree with you, and I see your point of view, and I understand that maybe the bylaw should be changed. But to this point, I don't see how it derogates from the intent of the bylaw, because it doesn't affect the setbacks, it doesn't affect the, the neighborhood, it doesn't, the exterior structure of this building is not going to change.
Right.
It just, so you just prefer it sitting there, well, with either an illegal apartment in or empty. I mean, that's.
But that's not my call. My call is, my call is, is this appropriate for our bylaws? And is the relief that we are offering appropriate based on the intent of the bylaw?
Right.
That's my call.
I, I.
My call isn't, what the hell happens, excuse me?
Yeah.
What happened, sorry. What happens to this, um, later, when we're not watching, right? I mean, and I, and I mean, I mean no ill, ill intent on, on what, what mischief might happen or not happen. I'm just saying, my role for this, because I take the work seriously, but not myself? To vote, to vote my, truly, to, to vote my conscience, th, this is an over-exaggerated apartment that does not conform to our bylaw, or even the relief that we would offer for an apartment. And, and the intent to go back and revise and come back with a new plan, this is not a new plan. And I don't think that there, I, I don't know, I don't know what could have been done. I'm not that smart.
That's okay. All right, so, um, you can see that we've all, hi, oh, I'm sorry, Caleb, hi, could you?
Through the, through the chair, just, I just want to bring something up. Um, I don't know if the board would consider the applicant revising his application, but a two-family home, the garage is attached to the home, so a two-family home can be approved by special permit in this, in this district, with no restrictions on the size of that apartment.
So if the, again, I'm speaking in hypotheticals, I fully understand that. So hypothetically speaking, if the board was to, um, consider or weigh the option of changing the application from accessories apartment to two-family home, we would remove those said restrictions, grant permits, if that was the case of the board, and they found it more palatable for the interpretation of the bylaw, and then they could move forward with whichever plans were appropriate and approved. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. This zoning district allows a two-family home by special permit with no, no size restrictions, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So before we make any changes or any discussions we're opening the hearing, I'm going to go ahead and let Miss Roach speak.
Through the chair, though, respectfully, I think we have to notice the butters on that. I don't think we can allow that without notice to neighbors. Maybe I'm wrong, but in my opinion, that's not.
It would be.
Have to continue and notice the butters, unless you disagree.
It would be up to the, up to the board to decide whether it was a substantial change to the application. If they decide it is, then the applicant could request a withdrawal without prejudice and reapply as a two-family, if that's what the board sees fit.
Loud in the district, but I.
It's loud.
Still think on.
But if, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but on the third meeting, to change it without notice, I, I don't know that I, I mean, I think it's probably a viable option. I just don't know if I'd be willing to do it tonight without notice to a butters, if that's even on the table, I'm just.
Well, you brought it up, and you're a member of the board, so it's, it's a hundred percent.
Yeah.
On the table, because you're a full member of the board.
There were neighbor, I mean, there's been, I think I would feel different if we never had any of butters, and we never had anyone speak, but the neighbors did come, they did voice concerns, they came to more than one meeting.
No, I think that's a valid point.
They may not have valid concerns, but, um, however, that doesn't restrict their square footage, so they could go back to their original plan.
Hmm.
Which probably makes them happier than the storage unit.
Had I known this option was available earlier, which I don't blame anybody, but that would have been nice to know two meetings ago.
Exactly.
And Caleb, just to confirm, very, right, we're correct when we say there's no square footage, uh.
Correct.
Limitations on the two family.
The things, through the chair, the things that the board would be looking at is if the applicant met all of his setbacks, um, it still looked like a single-family home. Actually, it doesn't even have to look at a, as a single-family home, as a two-family. It's just make sure he meets all his setbacks, and he, he has the parking required.
And it's still a special permit, so it doesn't run with the land. If the house is sold, the new owner needs to come and get a new special permit. It won't be a variance.
It's, it depends on how it's conditioned. It could, could be conditioned to, to expire with the applicant, but normally, a two-family special permit goes with the property, it's not conditioned, just, just because it is a two-family.
So let's go ahead and round the whole, with the new information we have.
Just to, can I just elaborate, through the chair, can I just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yep.
So a special permit as a two-family, it, it would go with the property normally. Um, an accessory apartment, if the property transfers, there is a condition that they have to come back and so there, the board does have more control with an accessory apartment than they would a two-family.
And on a special accessory apartment, the owner has to live there, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
For an accessory apartment, the owner has to live in one of the units, either the house or the apartment. A two-family could be rented, both units could be rented.
Well, Miss Chairman, um, I, I would consider this um an excellent option for the applicant to consider as far as a two-family, because I land on not if this should become an apartment or if it's right for the neighborhood, um, but the classification of this being accessory apartment based on size.
Okay.
And so um I think it would be a viable option. Um, I would however, wanna invest some time into um digging into the substantive change topic. Um, because that's a classification difference. But if this turns into a two-family, that's not a substantive change of what's in front of us, in my view. So what I would be interested in is, is helping the applicant through, through Caleb's office to try to navigate how technically that gets flipped, if that was an option that they wanted to pursue. So we wouldn't want that to, to, to limit them. Um, because I think that thi- this is a viable two-family op- um option. But that's not a substantive change. You're not doing anything different to that property other than labeling it different.
All we're doing is changing the application.
Correct. You're changing the application. So, so Caleb, what, what's the requirement on the substantive change component to that?
Um, that's, that's a decision the board has to decide is if if this is a two-family, the board's just looking at the structure on the outside. They're not looking at the interior of the building. Um, they're looking to see if the, the se- the structure meets the setbacks and he has the off-street parking required. Um, he can, he can change the plan through the building permit process and go back to his original plan if he chooses to.
Right, but my question, my question is, do we, if, do we decide, i- is it for the board to decide whether or not it is or is not a substantive change from what's before us?
That's correct.
Okay, and what's the implication of that? If, if it is a substantive change, because I would argue that it's not. So let's stay there. If it's not a substantive change, what outcome does that have?
If the board votes that it's not a, a substantial change and, and allows the applicant to modify to a, a two-family, they would just need to take a vote to that fact, and then, then they would take a vote on the two-family application.
So if it is a substantive change, then why is, is, is that to their detriment?
I think the concern was whether or not we were gonna have the butters re-notify or not.
If it's a substantial change, the applicant would have to start all over and reapply and re-notify a butters and.
Thanks. I've been getting hung up on the technicality. Okay, well, Miss Chairman, I, I, I won't, I won't be repetitive because I've got a I've got a tendency to keep the board a lot later than we should at times. Uh, but um, I give my other board members a chance, but I, I would, I would fall down on if, if uh the applicant looked at that direction favorably. Um, my opposition to it is um, is based on, on size and the genesis of the project, so I think that this is a viable two-family project.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just gonna add my last two cents, then we're gonna go around the rest of the board. I agree if the applicant was so interested in changing that. I also agree with Miss Roach's concerns about the re-notification of the butters first and making a decision in a future meeting, however. This meeting has remained open since seven twenty-one. We've never closed it and they were all informed to follow it. And you know, I was, I very specifically told them they would only be notified one time. So we don't necessarily technically have to. Should the board choose to do it as a courtesy, I fully understand and I respect that. I'm just, but I'm pointing out that it's been open and we don't have to do that. We can choose to just go ahead and agree to amend the uh application, should the applicant request that. So we do have those options. That's the board's choice. Other than that, I'm done. So Mister Cussy, to you, sir.
I uh prefer the accessory apartment.
Okay.
For the simple fact that the owner's gonna be living on the property, being where it is. I would like to see the owner in the home rather than people in and out of there. That would be a concern of mine.
I, I completely appreciate that, okay. Mister Chacolo.
Is um, if I might, through the chair, Caleb, if this does go through as a two-family, will it require a special permit?
A two-family requires a special permit, just like an accessory apartment does.
Would we be able to um put a requi- a requirement is, on the two-family? That it need, one unit has to be owner occupied?
I, I would advise against putting a condition like that on a two-family.
I point well taken, but would it be possible?
Anything's possible. Whether it would stand up in court, I, I'm not so sure on that.
Okay, thank you.
Just to speak to that point through the chair, I think it would be easier for us to condition, even though I don't know. Easier to say that the special permit, maybe not, that the special permit would only be valid during their ownership, rather than say conditioned that it always be owner occupied.
I think that's an inherent.
It is.
Of a special permit.
It is legally binding that you can condition a special permit's time period or, or length of, or as the length of ownership of the property.
Yeah, so.
I would just advise against conditioning on what's, on what's happening inside a one and two-family dwelling. I'm not allowed to have an opinion, but if the accessory apartment bylaw was challenged by somebody, I, I don't know how much that seven hundred square foot requirement would stand up in court, because I caution against. Zoning is not meant for the interior of, of a property.
I, I can't help myself.
Caleb.
We know.
Caleb, so, so just if, if an applicant has a two-family that's permitted under a special permit as a two-family and it follows the length that that applicant owns that property, and that applicant no longer owns that property, does it now not become a two-family?
The conditioning of the length of the permit, it, it says that the new owner is supposed to come in and apply for a special, for a special permit in his name.
Under the similar conditions, and now you've got an existing, okay.
How we would police that would be very difficult.
Understood. Okay, no, well, I'll, if, if I may end on, I, I think it's a, it's a very thoughtful consideration based on the control factor of having, you know, wanting to protect the integrity of the neighborhood and having a family member in there. And I'm torn with that, with being a property guy and liking people to be able to have flexibility on what they do with their property. Even though that statement kinda stands in, in contrast to my.
And that's why this.
But, but I, but I'd like, I'd like to see that, that, that flexibility of, of property ownership applied to, to an owner, so. Um, yeah, I mean, if, 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 to proceed, um would we then, would we then take a vote on substantive change? Would we need to ask from the applicant if they're interested in moving toward a two-family?
So procedurally, I would have to, we would have to end this discussion, we would have to open the public hearing again, we would have to get input from the applicant, determine what they wanna do, if they feel as though they wanna continue, if they wanna amend the application. And the board would have to discuss whether or not we wanna re uh notify all of the butters or are we gonna be satisfied that the hearing remained open and that they were instructed properly? Really what it comes down to, I think, is that, whether that, a- and I remember being pretty clear saying you're not gonna be re-notified as they were walking out.
You, you absolutely.
So um, you know, that's pretty much what we're at. So really, those things are just dotting i's and crossing t's to make sure we procedurally. How we get there, whether or not this is gonna be a two-family or a single-family or, excuse me, an accessory apartment, seems to be still up in the air on the board.
Okay, thank you, Miss Chairman, so.
So that's my own main concern. I'm not gonna have an applicant propose to an applicant or have him um, you know, suggest an, an application change if, if he, if he finds himself in the same muck and mire still.
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair comment, Miss Chairman. And so I'll, I'll end on this. I, I would be prepared to take a vote on the application as it stands. Um, I would also be prepared, at the board's pleasure, to entertain the applicant's um decision to modify this as a two-family application.
Okay.
Um, I would be fine in either direction. Uh, but I agree, I think we should move forward with one of the others this evening.
Okay, Mister Cussy?
I feel the same, but I um, either way, this is, it's either gonna be a two-family or accessory apartment.
Correct.
So there is gonna be an apartment there, one way or another. I still feel the accessory apartment is uh better suits the neighborhood in the fact that there will be an owner living there. I guess that just really helps me make my decisions.
I respect.
But I'm not opposed to a two-family also.
No, I, I respect that, Miss Cussy.
I, you know, there's gonna be an apartment there either way. That's, that's just my feeling.
Mister Chacolo, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to move forward on something also, like Mike said tonight.
Yeah. Mister Chacolo, your thoughts, sir?
I'm fine.
Okay, Miss Roach? Okay. So uh, you know, my thoughts are, again, I, I side with Mister Cussy on this one, I think, generally speaking. I like the idea that it's a accessory use apartment rather than two-family. I'm gonna go either way, to be quite honest with you. I don't have a problem with it. It's up to the applicant. Um, but I think the accessory use apartment with the owner occupation, um, and honestly, I, I, you've heard the, the the local authority say, the seven hundred square feet is very likely to be indefensible in court. It's again, it's just an arbitrary number that, that they came up with. So giving the fact that zoning is here to make sure that setbacks are in place, then setbacks, setbacks are in place. So that's just for me, and that's all I'm gonna say about that. Okay, Mister Mary, I know you're having a hard time with something. Please.
But our bylaw is not arbitrary, Miss Chairman, and it, it is a number that we land on, even if we don't like the number. And, and I don't know how that could be indefensible in court if it's in our bylaw, in that, in that fashion.
Well, just be.
It could be challenged.
Right.
It could be challenged, but, but it's not indefensible because it's a bylaw. It's a bylaw of the town. It's been voted on and ratified by the state. But that's a debate for another time.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so anyway, there you go. So uh, do I have a motion of um, go back to, what, hang on.
No, I was just, I think we have to open back up the public hearing.
Correct, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to open the public portion of the hearing again?
I'll make a motion to open the public portion of the hearing, Miss Chairman.
I'll second. Thank you. Um, Vice Chair?
I approve.
Mister Cussy? Mister Chacolo?
Prove.
Miss Roach?
Prove.
And I approve. Okay. So with that being said, you've heard the discussion. So your options on the table, as the board sees it based on this information cloud, um is that you can choose to keep the um situation the way it is, go with the accessory use apartment, or you can go and change it if you would like to request change to a two-family, and the board will consider each one based on uh what your, your choices.
Just to, I just have a couple of questions for Caleb.
Right ahead, please, yeah.
Um, on the, if we did the two-family and it meets the setbacks now as it stands, right now the way it's built, correct? And it meets, we have plenty of parking, the driveway's huge if you guys drove by and checked the project out. So as it stands right now, is there any reason to deny a plan for a two-family structure right now? From the zoning or from the, the building?
The things that the board, I mean, I can't say how the board's gonna act, but the things they'd be looking at is the setbacks, whether there's parking and whether it would be a detriment to the neighborhood.
So it's same structure, we're not asked of anything outside. Same, we could go with the full plan that we originally submitted, we've been trying to do this right. Um, is there any time delay on that, or it could be voted on this meeting if we change the application?
So the board would have to take a vote and decide if changing the label from an accessory apartment to a two-family is a substantial change or if, if it's an insubstantial change. If the board decides that just changing that label is insubstantial, then they, the, the applicant can request to modify his application to a two-family, and the board could take a vote tonight.
So as you heard me say earlier, that when the original meeting on seven twenty-one, at the end of that meeting, I very clearly told all the butters that they were notified. They would not be notified again, and it was up to them to continue to follow the meeting if they so chose. So that's what I was referring to, saying if uh Mrs. Miss Roach's concern was uh, would the butters duly notified? And um, so I, I personally think they have, but it's up to the board to make that decision. So that's what they have to decide first. Um, and then it would be a vote on whether or not to accept your substantial changes to the application or, or vote as is. So that's really your choice.
Um, we're trying to do the best for the town and wherever you think is best. We'd still like to go with the apartment if we knew it is. And what we couldn't say earlier is we're asking for, that's the unfinished area, just like you mentioned, the basement. We're asking, it's existing, we can't change the structure. If we're gonna make a seven hundred square foot apartment in this building, you still have that over there that's unfinished, so we can't change that structurally. Um, when you look at the zoning, um, like I said, we, we meet everything, not, there's nothing different outside than you're gonna see from inside, right? It, it's not gonna change anything in the neighborhood. So we're just looking, we, we're in a hot spot because it's a, it's a um, tough spot for the family. The father passed away and the daughter was a nurse who was gonna take care of him. They have no place to live. So we're looking to do this, you know, expeditiously to go forward. So we wanna work with the board. So if you're willing to go with the apartment and the bylaw changes, will we be come back and be able to apply for building space if they wanna add that? They might not want to. But if the bylaw changes, say a thousand square feet next year, could we come back to the building and ask to expand that other room that's existing upstairs?
Yeah, there's no reason why you couldn't come back with another permit request in the future, absolutely. Nothing, nothing will stop you from requesting changes in the future and applying for things, absolutely.
Right, like, so we wanna do what's best for the town, and if you think have an accessory, other, we know now that we could go the other way and get everything we want. We're not asking, this is, we wanna work with the board and ask just to get this bound. It's what we originally um came for. The original idea was not to have a family upstairs. It was the future that now Adam had built with his dad and just built those plumbing pipes in. He's a plumber, so we, we plumbed it. That's what they do, so. Um, said if you don't wanna change, we'll go keep the original application and go with the new plan submitted. And these were done by John Rail, the architect. We paid every time we made a change.
Right. Now, did these uh rooms downsize? I can't remember.
Yes, it's been downsized. We eliminated a bedroom. We have two bedrooms originally, and now we're having one bedroom.
And the, and the uh, the other uh rooms got downsized also?
If you look at, we made the dining room, we had an area, could have had a dining room table, we made that smaller, bedroom was smaller. We put the dining into um, a different area. Um, we eliminated like the, if you look on this plan, had a kitchenette with like seating tables, we made it smaller. Made this bedroom just a little bit smaller, give it more open space.
Oh, the, the whole apartment was pretty much altered.
Yeah, 'cause if you look at the original, there was closets in the upper side, and you can see that on the original plan, it's a full bedroom. And now this is unfinished area. It, it exists, we can't change that. So we looked at, insulated the walls and have this finished on the probably submitted for that seven hundred um square feet or just over, and submitted as it is. We just, like I said, we're in a hardship because um, the sister that was coming to take care of the dad, has no place to live. Now they sold their house and they have to move out. So we're trying to get it done as soon as possible.
Mister Chairman, if I might ask a question of Caleb.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Um, Caleb, we've heard the term setbacks thrown around a bit. How, if that were a two-family, how would that affect the setbacks being that that breezeway is attached?
So setbacks don't change based on a two-family or one-family. The, the side setback is I believe this is an RA district, it's ten feet, the rear setback's ten feet. The, the lot, lot setbacks don't change based on what you're building. It's, it's based on the zoning district of properties.
Back that is between the current existing house and this potential second home.
So.
They don't, they don't come into play?
So this is attached to the home through a breezeway?
Right.
These, the setbacks are, are for the lot, not for the structure. It's for, the setbacks are the, from the structure to the lot line.
Not to a neighbor?
To the lot line. So your side, side lot line, your neighbor's on, on his property, the side setback is ten feet.
Considered um on a lot with a neighbor next door. It's just gonna be a two-family on the same lot.
Two, two families are gen- they, they can, he, a two-family, he could take the deed and sell one of the apartments and make a zero lot line. But for building purposes, as long as he's meeting his lot setbacks, he can take, he can take it and sell each one down the road if he wanted to. That's why I said the board, the board with an accessory apartment, the board has a lot more control. Um, I, I don't know if, if the applicant would consider, or if the board would find it more appealing if the access to that storage area wasn't from the apartment, if it was from outside. That's something to think about. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, he wouldn't have to draw new plans, it's just moving a door. He might have to move his deck a little bit. I don't know if that's possible. It's just a, just a thought.
Can I just get us to zoom out for a minute? I feel like we're hyper-focused on, on periods and commons and stuff like that. And if we can kinda just step back and take a look at the overall big picture here and kinda get us back in focus, all we're talking about is an apartment over a garage. We're not talking about building an Auburn Mall. We're not talking about an Indian motorcycle dealership. We're not changing the impact of the, we're literally talking about four words on a piece of paper where it says accessory use apartment or uh, you know, a two-family home. Accessory use apartments gives the board and the town far more control over this property in the future. Granting a special permit for a two-family enables them to treat it like a condo or a townhouse or anything else down the road, immediately, in fact.
Correct.
You're gonna have more. You're gonna have more of an impact, more of a negative impact on the neighborhood, in my humble opinion. Granting this, suddenly creating them a townhome in the middle of the neighborhood than an accessory use apartment of eleven hundred square feet. I'm just being frank, because I can tell you that, that would, to me, I would be coming up here and asking you why you did that in my neighborhood.
Right, but respectfully, Mr. Chairman, that's not what this applicant's asking us to do. He's asking us on a hardship basis to open up this apartment for his family.
No, he's asking for a special permit to have an accessory use apartment.
Correct.
Or, a two-family building. For his family, right, that's what I'm saying. But what I'm telling you, but again, you talk about intent, and you change how you view the intent with each facet of the diamond, so to speak. You gotta, and then, and that intent doesn't change. So we gotta just look at it as, it's either an accessory use apartment, it's a two-family. What's gonna be, again, I'm not, I would be more concerned with the detrimental impact on the neighborhood than I am to the detrimental impact of a bylaw that is questionable in its defensibility. That's just my point to all of us. So I need you guys to kinda just think about that, what are we gonna do in the long term? And then, if, are we gonna allow every, um, applicant to come down the road and decide that they wanna have a two-family instead of a single family, and all of a sudden, Appleton Estates becomes Appleton Townhomes and Appleton condos, like that whole hill up there?
I would remind, Mr. Chairman, that we take every case on its merit.
I am just pointing out the things that I think the board needs to take long-term consideration, and you know, that's how I always look at things. I try to say, you know, we, we need to think about how it's gonna affect thirty years from now. And I think granting a substantial change just for four words on a paper, and then all of a sudden it's okay for them to have an eleven hundred square foot apartment, but because it says these four words, they can't have it anymore? I don't know, just saying.
Yeah, the two-family really changes, uh, the two-family really.
I think that has more of a negative impact on the surrounding buildings than the actual accessory apartment itself does.
Mr. Chairman, with respect, I, I don't think that the, um, the applicant is interested in the two-family based on his prior comments, unless we asked him a direct question, but it sounds like he was leaning towards keeping the original application for the apartment.
I think he's trying to do is demonstrate that he's willing to work with the board and satisfy the board with whatever we need. And again, this is just, we've done this, this is fifteen accessory use apartments this year, probably, right? I mean, I don't know why this one is suddenly becoming super challenging in three, in three hearings deep.
I'm not sure, um, how to interpret that statement, Mr. Chairman, I think that we've walked through our process um, pretty litigiously in the last couple of hearings. But, um, I think, I think what, what I would ask, if I may, through the chair, is, is, is it your intent to pivot this to a two-family, or to keep it as an original application for an apartment?
I have a question, if, if we go forward, do we close the hearing, and it's denied, and I come back with another proposal to do the two-family, and it meets all the requirements, gonna be voted on again?
Nope, if you-
I would disagree.
Because it's a separate permit with a separate, with a separate request.
I would disagree, he absolutely can, in my opinion.
Caleb, you wanna chime in on that?
Again, the board would have to, the board would have to decide whether it was a substantially different application.
Absolutely.
Or whether it was the same application.
Because there's no requirements, no size requirements, seems to me that would be a little bit different if we went that route. So, me as a builder, I know that's, I've built in other towns, I've built duplexes, I've built a bunch of different buildings commercial, and, um, I just wanna know, if you deny the permit as we're asking, we're trying to work with the board here, and you deny it, we can come back and open a new application tomorrow and come back again with the same property. And in the way I understand it, listening to Caleb and the board, there is no, nothing to stop us on the other permit from the board. There's nothing in the application that would say you can't do, we meet the setbacks, we meet the parking, it's connected, it meets all the criteria for that permit, there's no reason for the board, there's nothing written to deny the application of the two-family, the way I understand is what Caleb said.
Correct.
Well, Mr. Chairman, in fairness to the applicant, there's a, there's an additional condition of no detriment to the neighborhood, and I'm not challenging that there is, um, but neighbors may have a different opinion of that. And if it's substantive change and we have a different hearing, then neighbors will have an opportunity to reappear, um, and the board will weigh into their comments. Um, and so, is it absent of risk, I think is what you're asking? I don't think it's completely absent of risk.
And I understand it from the application, I know there's case law built on there and, and impact on neighborhoods, and there's a lot of case law that we've met and break, whether we have it, but on these decisions where if the impact on neighborhood is not changing at all on the outside, whether we never build it, or we do build it, you'd have to have that part of it. So, again, we're not looking, we wanna do what's best for the town, and what's best, we're trying to satisfy the board here. So we'd like to go forward with the apartment if we can, I just wanna know that if we deny this, that we come back with the other permit, that it's substantial different, and we can reapply, that's all I wanna know before we move forward.
You know, we've told every other applicant in the past that if their application is denied, they cannot reapply for two years. We can't, again, so we're, here we are being detrimental to three other bylaws as the dominoes fall just to protect one that's basically questionable legally, like sound.
I, I don't agree. To me, the structure is already there. I mean, they're not asking to build a two-family, but it is built yet. The structure is there, now it's just permitted. So, the structure is there, it's one or the other. All I have to say, again, my first conclusion here is that the accessory, accessory apartment is, is a better deal for the town and the neighborhood, too, just, that's my feeling, yeah. And, and I, and I cannot tell you how much I respect that, because you've always, you've always had the neighborhood as, as, as front of mind and, and important. Mr. Chairman, can I explore just a question with Ms. Roach?
Absolutely.
So, um-
Hopefully, I know the answer.
You will, you absolutely will, because, because you have a strong opinion on it, which I, I respect. Um, substantive change on the reapplication. Um, so if they, if they reapply as a two-family, you consider that a substantive change because it's now a two-family different classification, is that correct?
In my opinion, yes, it is.
Okay, um, all right.
And I don't disagree with Mr. Pedro that we have in the past said that if you apply, and that's not even up to us. If you apply and you're denied, it's a two-year wait, that's not up to us to decide, that's a fact. But I think this is a different application that is for the board to decide. My opinion is, yes, they would be able to apply, maybe Caleb disagrees. I don't know that he makes the decision either, I think it probably comes to us.
It, it like, it comes to us, and-
But I think it would be a different application, and I also agree with Mr. Cussie. I, whilst I thought the two-family was a great idea from the beginning, because I think it gives the applicant what they originally wanted, and that might be what's really truly best for their family. I think that we definitely would have to tell the neighbors, because I don't think the neighbors were, thought that it, there was a chance it could be a two-family. They could get their permit, they could finish this apartment, they could create a zero lot line, they could sell two condos within six months.
That's why it's different.
That has to be, are they gonna? Probably not, they want the sister to live there, but they could do that. And I also think that by making an accessory apartment with the requirement that the owner live there, we can condition the length of a special permit, so we can say on the record that the special permit for the accessory apartment is extinguished upon transfer of the property. Now, will the next owner come and get? Who knows, that's the question, we don't, we don't know what that's gonna, but, um, we do have more control, we can condition that the door, that there is no access from the inside. We can make conditions on, on the building that probably screws up a little bit of the deck, it probably requires a little bit of changing. Um, I think it's more advantageous for us to condition where we can to ensure the best we can that some changes are not made. We're naive if we think that everybody who comes before us sticks to their original plan, and after Caleb leaves, they don't do this, that, or that. I think it's naive to think that that is not the case, but that's not for us to control. If we want Caleb, the building department, knocking on every door to inspect every project five years later, we better increase the budget. Other than that, that's never gonna happen.
Correct. I was, I asked the question originally because I was inclined to think that this was not a substantive change, because we're not, the utility of the location, the utility of the building is not changing. But to your point, the options of use do change substantially.
Definitely, yeah.
And so, and so I concede that, that, that I would agree it would be a substantive change on the merit of the use of it. Doesn't change what they're gonna do, or what, what they're gonna do there, or what it's gonna look like, how they're gonna use it, but it could change how they manage it, which is a substantive change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that.
And it's really ensures nobody has to live there that is owner of the property, and they could sell it to somebody who's gonna be an absentee landlord, and that definitely affects the neighbors more, I think, than having the daughter upstairs and the son and the dad's.
And, thank you. So, 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 and what I'm hearing, and we're still, um, with an open hearing with the applicant, so, so what I'm hearing in your question of, of if in fact you were to come back and apply for a two-family, that, that, it sounds like that the board generally agrees that it would be a substantive change in a new application, and that we would not hold you to a two-year, uh, return. Um, that it would be enough of a substantive change to be a brand-new application because of that. Um, and again, I, I originally thought that it would not be because of, of use, we're not changing what they're asking to do, but the, the-
Changing what they can do.
What they can do, um, so I, I would, I would absolutely agree. Um, so I, I do think that they would have the option to come back.
I would agree, but I would also caution that the other members of the board haven't been vetted yet in terms of how they feel about that, so we don't know necessarily if they would get a vote.
A fair, fair point, Mr. Chairman.
So I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Yeah, no, fair point, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
And also on the, if we were to vote on accessory apartment tonight, that requires only a majority.
Correct.
This is not a variance.
Correct. It's a three to two, four to one, five oh. Uh, anything beyond that is a no-go.
Right, just the majority.
Yep, simple majority, correct.
Yeah.
For the record.
We would ask if we do go forward not to restrict access from inside, if you look at the bedroom in the plan, there's no closets at all. Like, to have that space to store, I think they're moving from a house into a, into a living space, so you have no access to any closets, it's gonna be very difficult. We're making, it's hot enough now to move into one bedroom from a full house. So we're trying to make it, you know, work with the town and work with the board, um, and make it as easy as, but we need that door because it's gonna be storage for just about anything you can think of.
I see the plans as submitted. If the board chooses to vote, um, I think we should look at the plans as they are submitted this evening. I don't think we should require any further modifications. I think we've spent enough of this gentleman's money, three architectural trips. Um, I'm just saying, uh, you know, I think that's, we have to take that into consideration every time we make these decisions for changes. It's not cheap, that's, you know, a, a architectural fee every time. Um, so, again, I just think that, uh, if, if the board so chooses to vote this evening, then I think it stands on the changes that we have in front of us. Just my opinion. Well, unless the board would rather see other changes, that's just, again, I'm, I'm asking, I, I know, I, I made the statement, but if, if people don't agree with me, I need to know that, too, you know, that's all.
Seven seventy-four is, you know.
Mm-hmm.
In my, my view.
Okay. Any other thoughts for the member of the board? I'm gonna try to get this thing pushed forward, one way or the other. I'm not proposing anything that's gonna happen, but if, I'm gonna ask the applicant to go ahead and make a decision.
I just wanna make one more note on this, that the fifty-seventh feet of the seventy-four feet is the stairway. Really not living space, it's the stairway the architect figured because the board wanted to see the stairways, wanted to mention it, so we figured that in, so fifty-seven of the seventy-four square feet is a stairway to come up to get into it.
Yeah, and I agree, it is technically living space, but it's not like you're gonna put a chair there, you're not gonna have, I got. So that is something, I, and again, I know it is living space, but it makes sense, I mean, what are you gonna do with a staircase? Except walk up and down it. Okay, so, um, would you, you have a couple of options, okay, as I see it. You could request a continuation, again, just as it stands, and they continue the debate, and that's okay, too. You can ask for a vote as the application stands this evening, or you can ask for a, uh, change to the application to go for a modification from a, uh, accessory use apartment to a two-family. So those are really your three choices, I see it. If, if I missed one, I just wanna make sure, I don't wanna leave any options off the table.
Those are the options that, uh-
Right, I just wanted to make sure that I, I didn't miss any. I rely on my board sometimes to have a better memory than me.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so, yeah, that's what we have.
We'd like to move forward with the plan we submitted today. We've done everything you've asked, we've changed it numerous times, we've come back, we, like I said, this is something we just wanna work what's best for the town and the board, so it's, we'd like you to vote on as is proposed tonight on the plan.
Okay, so you heard that?
Through the chair, I'm incorrect. Um, Master of Law, Chapter Forty, Section Nine, Special Permits, requires the unanimous vote of a three-member board or the vote of at least four members of a five-member board to grant a special permit or variance.
Oh, okay, so no, we have to do a four to one then. I, I apologize, it is a supermajority.
As am I, I did not think that was the case, I thought that was only with variances, um, but this clearly says-
Okay, so that's another thing you gotta consider, is that it's a four to one vote. I thought it was a three to two, but it's a four to one vote. I think you get a general idea of where the board members stand, just based on our consideration and our opinions this evening. So, um, with that being said, um, with that new information, you gotta decide if you wanna have the vote tonight, and then try to reapply if it doesn't go through, or if it gets through, right? I wanna make, make sure you, you're weighing all of your, uh, options accordingly.
Yeah, we both, um, chatted about it, we agree the board feels it's accessory apartment what's best for the town, we wanna go with that.
Okay.
And if, if we vote on it doesn't, we can come back with a different application.
Okay.
With no restrictions.
Does that satisfy the members of the board? I mean, to a degree, right? I mean, at least for, for the purpose of moving forward?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we owe this gentleman an answer.
Okay, so with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing again?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I'll second that.
Thank you, I was just gonna say, okay, so, uh, Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Thank you. Mr. Cussie?
Approve.
Ms. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Roach? And I approve. Okay, so, i- is, uh, the public portion of the hearing is closed? Um, so, do you, is, is anybody's opinion changed with this, um, application? Based on the new information and the comparison of the two paths that we have to follow? Um, is there any more, um, new information that you'd like to provide or add?
No, Mr. Chairman, and, and for the record, my, my opinion hasn't changed from my original position.
Gotcha, and I appreciate that. Mr. Cussie? Okay, Ms. Chacolo?
No.
Ms. Roach?
Through the chair, would it change your opinion if the space was, in fact, required to be modified and unaccessed against Mr. Pedro's original thoughts? If it was conditioned?
And that's fine, whatever you wanna, you could add conditions as a board.
I'm just putting it out there.
But, but, but fair, but, no, I, I mean, I just, I think I, I lean on principle on this one for me.
So it wouldn't change your opinion?
Wouldn't change my opinion.
Thank you. Okay?
I have nothing else, then?
Okay, I have nothing else either. Um, so, I mean, is there a motion on the, uh, six o'clock PM applicant, Adam Chumsey, requesting a special permit on a Section nine point three point twelve of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment located at fifty-eight Adella Street, map four parcel twenty. This has been continued from seven twenty-one and eight eighteen twenty-two.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under Section nine point three point one two of Auburn zoning bylaw for accessory apartment located at fifty-eight Adella Street, map zero zero four parcel twenty, um, with the standard regular conditions that are imposed by the building inspector and the condition that the storage area have no access from the inside of the apartment.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, a motion from Ms. Roach, and we have a second-
I think to withdraw, we're gonna, we're gonna withdraw. We, we can't have, we don't wanna have, we need the access inside the house, or the, then you're doing the proposal to have the access be from outside, it's changing structural, it's changing the building, they got to walk upstairs to bring something to storage, to walk downstairs around the building, and it's dangerous, I mean, wintertime, that's, that's-
So, um, we, I don't, this is something that's really unusual, I feel like this thing is unraveling. We've never been halfway through a vote before and had an applicant decide that they wanna just withdraw. I don't even know legally we can do that. We are at impasse now, I believe.
I've never seen that happen.
I, I, I can honestly tell you that I think at this point, I don't, I don't think we can.
I don't think the motion was second.
We have a motion and a second, it stands on the floor, and also it's closed, public hearing.
It is closed to the applicant, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, um-
So I think we just have to proceed, I have to be honest with you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, we can, in my view, um, we could, we could proceed, but we could entertain a withdrawal from the motion and the second, and decide as a board, based on the information that we heard but we didn't hear because it's closed to the applicant, um, decide whether or not we open a public portion of the hearing and allow the applicant to make his request. I think that, given that we have not taken a full vote, I, I- I think that, given that we have not taken a full vote, I, I, I agree with the procedural challenge here. But I would also like this applicant to have every opportunity to make their decisions. So I, I think that, for what it's worth, I think that we could, if the board would consider, the motion and the second could be withdrawn, and the public portion of the hearing could be reopened, in my humble opinion.
I'm happy to withdraw the motion if the board...
Okay, I will, I will do that. I will withdraw the motion. I understand that. But I'm also going to say this for the record too. We have basically verbally and intellectually abused five bylaws to protect one bylaw that is basically indefensible. I just want to say that for the record. We have literally abused five other bylaws for the purpose of protecting one that has no basis to stand before it legally. So just for the record, that's the case. So do, there, do we have a motion to withdraw the vote the board just took?
Mr. Chairman, I, I feel compelled as vice chair. I, I vehemently disagree that we're, that, that it's an indefensible bylaw. But I, I think that, that procedurally, we should maybe take that in closed session at some point.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So again, it's my opinion.
I'll make a motion to withdraw my original motion to approve the six o'clock applicant.
So do I have, so Ms. Roach has made a motion to withdraw. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. So this is all just for the motion withdrawn, just to be clear. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve to withdraw.
Mr. Cusi, how do you vote? Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote? Approved. Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approved.
I vote to approve. Also, just to be clear, we, we had a closed portion of the public hearing. The comment from the applicant should not have been considered, just to be fair. And that's why I'm trying to be procedurally correct as the chair, and why I say we have just basically assaulted several other bylaws in the process of protecting one.
I, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm, I'm quite agreed. So I'm, I'm that meticulous PETA. I don't think that it was a violation of the bylaws. I do think that we butchered Robinson's rules. A public...
Robinson's rules means apology time.
So I concede that. I absolutely concede that. I, I disagree that it was a violation of the bylaws. I do agree that we have shat on Robinson's rules in the most profane way this evening.
Okay. Point taken and agreed upon. So with that being said, I apologize for all this delay. You can see that the board is split on this. Some of us agree that your project is suitable the way it is, some of us don't. But I think it was, you know, you're going to have to formally request again. So would you prefer a continuation or would you...
Through the chair, we need to take a vote to open the public portion of the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the public portion of the hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Maron.
I approve.
Mr. Cusi, Ms. Chacolo, and Ms. Roach.
Approved.
And me. Okay, yep. So you have a couple of choices. You can do another continuation, and it has the, the way it stands. It doesn't, I can be honest with you, it doesn't appear as though it will pass.
We would like to withdraw without prejudice, and we're going to reapply to the proper application for, that we'll submit to the building department.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I understand.
Thank you for your time.
So what we have here is a request to withdraw the application. So just for the record, because this is going to obviously have a bothers come back in the future and all that, I just want to make sure that it's clear that this will be the end of this hearing. So it will wrap up after this, but I just want to take a formal vote to make sure that we are correct in this. So do I have a motion to accept the applicant's request to withdraw the application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice, correct.
Without prejudice, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. So Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cusi? Mr. Chacolo?
Deny.
Deny? Okay. Ms. Roach? And I approve. Okay. So you had a...
Chairman, may I make a comment?
You absolutely may make a comment.
That we have had multiple members here speak. There has been some real thoughtful things said about this application. To drag it out further, I think is really an injustice to us as a board as well as the plaintiff, shall I say, because that's, yeah.
I agree. But I, the, the board voted...
Drag it out. If, there is, I believe, no new information that will come to light with a withdrawal or even postponing it. I, I truly believe that we have said what needs to be said. To put this now in, because we, we all know as a board, it's going to come back much the same as what we've seen. And so to put this in limbo does service to nobody.
Again, but the vote, this is how the board voted. I agree with you. And I, I definitely take your comment into the record.
Do we have a method to allow the board to thoughtfully reconsider what we've just, for the past two minutes, gone through?
No. I can be honest with you, as the chair, I just don't feel comfortable with it at this point. We've very narrowly maneuvered through some very dangerous waters legally in terms of how we manage procedurally in this one, I think. I think we've probably skimmed the surface of a lawsuit several times. I think that right now, the best course of action is to allow the application to settle and allow the, the applicants to come back with a new package. I think that's probably the best route. I think this particular package got pretty muddled in the waters. And I think it would be best that we come back with a fresh slate. And again, the board's already voted, so we're not going to, I don't, I'm not going to propose another vote to change it. So with that being said, you are welcome to come back with another set of plans, another application, anytime in the future. You know, as far as I'm concerned, I would like to ask the board that if we could continue the, like, to waive the fees on the, the application process so they can apply it to the next one. And we've, we've had them change plans three times at probably five hundred dollars a shot. That's expensive. So I would like to make a motion that we waive the fees for the applicant on this particular one.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, you're requesting that we waive the fees on the application that's been withdrawn?
Uh, yeah, I think we're probably pushing that, right? Again.
The only, the only reason why I ask is, is because I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to entertaining it. But I would suggest that if we wanted to make such a gesture, that it be on a forward application.
Appreciate it. I get that. And that's a very good idea. Thank you.
Well, I could, I could certainly be in the minority. I mean, I'm not opposed.
No, I think you're right. I think that's a good idea.
But I don't, I don't, I don't, I think, I think it's a genuine, I think it's a genuine offer and suggestion. But I, I think on a forward application may be more appropriate based on how we have wagged the dog on this.
Okay. So you heard that?
Through the, through the chair, we just need to be specific about what we're waiving.
We're not waiving anything at this point. We're going to consider it a future application. We're just a, a quick discussion, just so you're aware. Like, I, I shot it, but it got shot down. So anyway, okay, so you're welcome to go. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time, gentlemen. So with that being said, I just want to make sure we have a six o'clock PM. I want, request an official closing of this hearing dating back to seven twenty-one twenty-two.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to close that hearing as stated.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Okay. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cusi?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Roach? And I approve. Okay. So that particular hearing is officially closed. So we'll give them a chance to rattle their papers. We have a six oh five applicant, Heather Johnson, requesting a special permit under eight three two of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an addition to an existing non-conforming structure located at one twenty-nine Wallace Ave, map twenty-three parcel forty. Is the applicant present?
I am. And my husband, my, hello, my husband on the call. We just had a really hard time hearing, so I ran down here.
So I apologize for the delay. You can see we tend to vet our applications very carefully. Try to be as fair as possible, so I apologize. You're an hour and a half into it. So as soon as Vice Chair Maron comes back from his break, we'll go ahead and we'll get this hearing started.
Listening to everything that I listened to, I was going to vote to approve it because even though I didn't like it, I didn't like it, but it's not my decision. It's not a matter of like or not.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so the applicant has presented themselves. We have not opened the hearing yet, so we're going to do that right now. So again, just, we read the six oh five applicant, Heather Johnson, title. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cusi? Ms. Roach?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay, ma'am, if you could go ahead and just give us an overview of what they'd like to accomplish, please?
Yes, we would like to build a small addition to our existing structure. We're just going to bump out, what is it, the south wall to be even with our little back porch there. This will give us a little bit more room in our dining area. It will also create a bedroom, an additional bedroom, which we sorely need.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to, oh, so first of all, just to be, for the record, we have nobody else present in the room, so we have no bothers present for this particular hearing that would like to comment. Just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that, so if you can't see it, the folks at home. And Vice Chair Maron, the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is Caleb in there?
Yep, he's over there.
Okay, sorry.
Encyclopedia Caleb.
I saw him just pop up. Thank you. And thank you for being here. Just a question to Caleb, if I may. So this, this property is considered non-conforming, correct?
So the structure's considered existing non-conforming because it does not meet the front setback?
Okay. And the front setback, as it sits today, is thirty feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we know if this property has ever met a setback?
I would have to do a lot of research.
No, I apologize. Caleb?
I didn't do the research to see how far back the...
Fair.
My guess would be no.
Okay. No, it's fair, because it, because it, it, it's just I did have an opportunity to view the property and it, it appears that on several, I would imagine, when it was constructed. Do we know how old the property is?
Nineteen eleven or fifteen. I keep forgetting.
Okay, so way back.
It's old.
Okay, so more than twenty-five years. My, my assumption, and the reason why I bring it up is, Chairman, is my, my assumption is that the property met setbacks back in the day when it was originally...
It probably, most likely predates setbacks.
Okay. So, so for that fact, the, the non-conforming, existing non-conforming, our bylaws would have changed on setbacks, thereby rendering this property existing and then non-conforming?
Correct.
Thank you.
I can add that the lot's also non-conforming because there's only eighty feet of frontage, so it probably predates zoning.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so to the applicant, the, the addition that you're proposing, if I understand the, the rendering, the addition to the right side, correct? As you're looking at the front of the property?
As you're looking at it.
Okay. And so will it meet or is it setback from the, the front of the, the addition? Is it setback from the house or does it meet the footprint of the house?
It does not meet the existing front of the house.
Okay, so it's set...
It's a little bit further back.
It jogs back.
Yeah.
Okay. And do you know, is, are there any concerns or considerations for the setback on the, on the left side? Excuse me, that's the right side.
You mean, like, do we meet in terms of the bothers? Yeah, we're within, we're within the fifteen feet.
That's, okay, because that fifteen feet. Where is your line? Is it, is it before the hedge row or is it after? Do you own those?
Uh, those are ours.
Okay, so those are yours.
It kind of, yeah. And, and the lot line, it's not square, so it, it kind of... But basically, it goes through the hedge row.
Okay, all right. But you, okay, it's on the...
We're on this, uh, the hedge row's ours.
Okay.
Through, through the chair, the, the plan that's on the screen, the dotted line is actually the setback line. The dotted line on the plan is, is what the setback is for the law.
Oh, thank you. All right. No, vivid. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to reserve and give other board members an opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cusi, to you, sir?
I have no questions right now. It's a simple fact that I don't see any opposition from neighbors. Just didn't know about her, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, a question for Caleb. Just as a matter to clear up a little confusion I have. If we are to approve something that is non, to a non-conforming structure, are we multiplying that non-conforming? In other words, are we adding to that fact that it is now bigger and non-conforming? Even though it's less non-conforming than the original?
So I think I can answer your question. I think you're asking if increasing the size of the house is increasing the non-conformity? And I would say no. The only non-conformity is the setback. Right now, the, the front of the house is fourteen point one feet from the property line. The addition is proposed to be twenty-one point seven feet from...
But the setback is thirty.
Correct. But the existing home is fourteen point one feet.
Correct.
So to increase, increase that non-conformity, you would have to put the addition closer to the property line. You would have to go less than fourteen point one.
Okay, so that would, if we're falling within a non-conforming zone, we'll say, just because we're doing that, we're not increasing the non-conforming factor?
I would say you're not, but I mean, that's, that's, that's what the board needs to decide, is, is if this increases the non-conformity. And I would say if the setback is more than the existing setback, you're not increasing the non-conformity.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for asking that question, Ms. Chacolo, because it was one of the reasons why I wanted to confirm that, that it's in fact not meeting even or coming out from the existing, but it's actually suppressed behind the existing. And so as I understand it, Ms. Chacolo, the, the doubling down on the conformity would be in fact if it was not just meeting the footprint, but it was extended, and then the conformity based on that setback was actually decreasing the fourteen one to whatever factor you might consider but under fourteen feet.
Right.
So it's not, it's, it's not square rooting.
If you flipped, flipped it around and had the opposite situation of the addition being the house and the existing house being the addition, then we, we couldn't do it.
You're, you're very well made, because it would be increasing the non-conformity. Understood.
If we were talking about a front porch, we'd be in a very different situation.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for bringing us to point. You're exactly right.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Roach? Uh, Mr. Chacolo, are you satisfied with everything? Okay. Ms. Roach?
Um, no. I mean, this is like exactly, in my opinion, the kind of thing we, we should be... She already is fourteen. She's going to be twenty-one. It's three less than she has to. She's already, the fourteen has already been approved because it's non-conforming. So I mean, in my opinion, this is like a very easy decision. Yes, she's...
And I think the Caleb's point as well.
And I just want to know, because I always talk about sewer. When you're adding bedrooms, she's connected to Auburn Sewer Town. It's on the application. It's circled. When you add bedrooms and you have a subject system, we're supposed to take issue with that.
Right, right.
But that does not apply here. I just want to put that on the record for anyone at home. I always talk about sewer. So other than that, no, I have no questions or setbacks are fine.
Thank you. And I think to Caleb's point too, you know, you're talking about the setbacks. This was set up before, right? So pre-existing non-conforming doesn't necessarily mean that we, they're being punished. It just means they don't want anybody else to do it, right? So if it was built in nineteen eleven, something built in nineteen sixty can't be ten feet from the road. That's really all it's, pre-existing, like, you know. When they drew the lines up, they got stuck on their porch, right?
Yeah, I, I made the comment when, in doing the property, Mr. Chairman, that if, if this, if this home is non-conforming, just about every property up there is non-conforming. When they came, when they came back with, yeah, certainly. I mean, a very quaint neighborhood.
Right, absolutely.
But, but it, it, every, when we went to thirty feet, every property must have been shoved into a non-conforming.
Absolutely, yeah. The whole place would have been. I agree, for sure. Okay, so are there any further discussion on this? Okay. And I think we pointed out there are no bothers present. So do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Vice Chair?
I approve.
Mr. Cusi? Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
And I approve. Do I have a motion on the six oh five applicant? Hang on here. Heather Johnson requesting a special permit under Section eight three two of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an addition to an existing non-conforming structure located at one twenty-nine Wallace Ave, map twenty-three parcel forty.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve. The hearing is stated with standard conditions.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cusi?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Prove.
Ms. Roach? And I vote to approve.
Thank you very much.
You're all set, so um you can be in contact with Caleb or somebody at Department of Inspectual Services, and they'll help you proceed from there.
And and as you, as you exit, um I feel compelled that I did see you come in earlier, um that um it was mostly my fault that you had waited so long for your hearing, and so thank you for your patience in being here.
We were trying to join at home, but it was just very echoey.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bush, you still awake? You still with us over there? Nope. Okay, so um on to new business real quick, um I'd like to introduce our newest, um do I call him an accessory member, how do we want to address him?
Alternate.
Alternate.
Alternate, all right, I'll go with alternate still.
An accessory is one of those things you find in your glove compartment that you don't know why you bought it.
That's true, okay, I wasn't sure, all right, so introduce yourself, what's your name?
Yeah, so uh my name's Ryan Garbedian, I live at thirteen Meadowbrook Road, I've been a lifelong Auburn resident, um graduated self-academy undergrad in May, and I'm going to law school.
Good for you, and how long have you been in law school?
Uh just started, so uh three weeks.
Three weeks, wow, so you're gonna be very busy.
I will, yes.
And uh is this an area of interest for you to to law or you're just kind of like poking around?
Poking around, I've always wanted to get a little more involved in the town, I already uh am a town meeting member, uh so I wanted to go on a board, I saw ZDA needed the help, and uh with the quasi judicial nature, uh I also found that very.
Excellent, thank you very much.
We're a quasi judicial nature, I like that, I like that a lot.
Well, I'm really, I I appreciate you, and I'm sure on behalf of the board that uh you came forward and volunteered, and uh I'm sure you've been very busy, so uh good luck with law school.
Thank you.
And uh we definitely welcome your input on the board, so thanks for being here.
Welcome, welcome.
Okay, um.
Got a good insight from you.
Yes.
We're always like this, just saying now.
Yeah, pretty much every meeting, this should be, this should be like a comedy show at some point, uh Pox and Rec. So the next meeting is October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, um if anybody has any applications or issues that they want to get in, go ahead and contact the Department of Inspectual Services, otherwise, we have nothing else, so I'll make a motion, ooh.
Through the chair, since we're on the channel, October twentieth is also the Auburn Youth and Family Services fundraiser at Chuck's, it's a great event, it serves the town, it makes money for Auburn Youth, which helps every, all the kids of the community, buy your tickets, get them early, call Auburn Youth and get your tickets, it's that same night.
So actually, I'm glad that you had the opportunity to say that, so um do you have the number for Auburn Youth and Family Services?
You can get it right now.
So, this is a fantastic event, it really is probably one of the best fundraisers they do in town every year, and I know it's unusual for us to, we're not necessarily endorsing, but if people were interested in finding tickets to that event, Auburn Youth and Family Services is at?
Uh five zero eight eight three two five seven zero seven is the number to Auburn Youth and Family Services, they are located um on Pheasant Court, right behind Pass Down McDonald's by Pass Young Shings, you can buy them in person, um you can buy them online. And it's a wonderful event, there's lots of raffles and prizes and a dinner at Chuck's.
And they do a fantastic job.
It's fabulous, it raises money for a lot of good things that they do.
Absolutely, excellent, so one other thing I just wanted to point, I know this is unusual as well, but I just wanted to say and offer my condolences, we lost a friend this week. Um she has been a lifelong member of the community, her husband was a lifelong member of the community, they have multiple generations in town. Uh she's volunteer in everything from the historic commission to pretty much every event in town, and um Sue Weagle passed away, which was really unfortunate, because she's had a long time struggle and she's just an incredibly brave woman. Um so I just wanted to give condolences to her family, um they have been a fabric in the Auburn community for, like I said, generations, and just an absolutely wonderful woman, and I really did consider her a personal friend, so my condolences to the Weagle family. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? Okay, so Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cusi?
Prove.
Mr. Chacolo, you want to go on yet? And Ms. Roach?
Approve.
And I approve, okay, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.